It's 6:30. I'll call the meeting in order. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg, as well as the News Graphic and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions, Dr. Clark.
All right. This evening, we will be recognizing the following students for their perfect attendance during the 2022-23 school year. These students, these are students who did not miss a single day of school for any reason. Vivian Schaefer, Laken Wood, Remy Lenhart, Miles Bowen, Eric Lynn, Mason McManus, Reese Regnitz, Juliette Schaefer, William Whedon, Ashley Commons, Joshua Maslick, Sarah Matthews, Rachel Winker, Madeline Wutenska, Brianna Lusk, Matthew Netham, Mikell Olson, and Alexander Kim. Congratulations. Right? Exactly. All right. Consent agenda. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on June 21st, 2023, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of accounts, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. First time doing this, Mr. Tony DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Jaredon. Good evening, School Board. This evening, we seek your approval for the following resignations: Amanda Zerbakin at Thorson and Lorraine La Sage, district-wide IMC. And then we seek your approval for the contract recommendations for Benjamin Sloma, Educator of CHS, Kathleen O'Connell, CHS, Paul Dorro, CHS, Joelle Hartline at Webster, and Michelle Neglia, district-wide.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or question?
I just have a quick question for Ms. La Sage's position. Is that posted and we can currently?
Actually, it's already down. We posted. Went through the interview process. Alan Growth loved that, and we have already hired that position, and that would be Michelle.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question on the minutes from last month's meeting. So we have in the draft minutes that we had a six to zero vote in favor of the consent agenda last month, but I didn't hear an audible vote from at least one board member. If a board member doesn't vote, and maybe I just didn't hear it, but I didn't hear an aye or nay, and then I watched the district recording of it, and I didn't see a vote. You know, we all kind of leaned forward and our mouths moved, and I didn't see a vote. Is that still, does that still count as a, as an aye vote, or is it ever noted? Or, I mean, I could have misheard, but...
Usually, if no one says nay or abstain, I take it that they voted yes in favor of the chair.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would hope everybody would give an audible, clear, you know, aye or nay vote, you know, over here to, to give a vote on each item. So, okay. Thank you.
I suppose if somebody didn't, a person could mention it when they look at the minutes here. If it's a six-zero, they'll say, "Well, no, I didn't say aye, so I should be on there, maybe." But we don't, that's probably the backstop on that.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, I think, thank you for the comment, Elizabeth. I, I think it's possible that I didn't state it audibly. That's, that's possible. So I'm happy to make any kind of anything, but because I didn't say nay or abstain, from me, it's a six-zero, but I'm happy to do anything if our board president would like that stated or amended or whatever the case may be.
That's why I always ask if anybody is against, or, and most times, if I haven't seen everybody or heard everybody, then I'll say the abstain, but I usually take it as a yes vote. But we all should be voting.
Of course. Yep.
Okay. So, Beck, is there a motion to approve, then?
I'll make a motion to approve. I will second that.
There's a motion to second. All those in favor?
I had one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Then I'll hold the vote.
I was reviewing the finance report for this month, and I was just wondering, as a board, do we ever, or would we ever want to consider having a discussion in keeping our WASB membership? Like, I saw the dues, the yearly dues come up for this month, and they were over $8,000 for our district to be WASB members, and I haven't been on the board for that long, so maybe some of the people who have been on the board longer can explain, like, some of the value that our district gets from that. We, I've been to, like, one of their meetings, like, a new board member, like, orientation meeting about a year or so ago, but I know, like, we didn't use their superintendent search services. I don't believe that we use, like, their legal services that they offer. So I was just kind of wondering, are we, maybe that's something we could discuss in the future. Are we getting the value out of that membership?
I'd like to add to the Personal Finance Committee to review for future.
Okay.
Because if, if we're not using it yet, you're absolutely right. I mean, they do do their conference, they do do some lobbying. Often, when I was the representative there, lobbying didn't match our votes on things, but they do do things like that. We occasionally call them for other things.
Yep. I would say that there's actually a fair amount that now Tony coming in will use them quite a bit. Conrad used them a lot for some of the training that they provide. And there's times where we would, where I would call their legal counsel. I attend, they put on some legal conferences that I, that I've gone to, a couple of those this past year, and so there's more to it that, that may be outside of just the board, but certainly the conversation at Personal Finance would, would definitely be good.
That'd be great, because then you can explain what the cost is, and are we getting our fair share of that?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Like, there was a motion and a second. Are those still standing?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
All right. Superintendent's report. While we are in the middle of summer, our school teams are hard at work reviewing last year's data and preparing for the upcoming school year. Over the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to sit in on data review sessions at each of our schools. The teams at each school conducted deep dives into their spring assessment data from forward ACT and pre-ACT assessments. While I can't go into detail regarding the results, because the data is embargoed by the state until this fall, I can tell you that our students, families, and educators continue to show remarkable achievement results. The results from this spring's assessments continue to demonstrate that our families and educators are truly dedicated to ensuring that our students receive the best education possible. It is a privilege and honor to work in this district, and I am eagerly looking forward to the 2023-24 school year. Not that I'm wishing the summer to end too quickly. That concludes my report.
But if you have been, like Costco, they have Halloween decorations and you can vote on them.
Yes.
Just saying. Any questions, the superintendent, on the report? If not, I'll go to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Recommendation?
All right. This evening, we have five recommendations to present to the board. The first three recommendations will be presented by Alan Growth, Director of Curriculum Instruction. The first recommendation is in regards to the 2023-24 Notice of Academic Standards. Per state statute, school boards of public school districts in Wisconsin are required to notify parents and guardians of the academic standards that will be used during the school year.
And so the, good evening, everyone. The document that's linked in the background information and available to the public is the summary of the standards for Cedarburg School District. So you'll notice, in keeping with last year, each content area has a Cedarburg standards summary of the standards that go into the development of that content area. Further, I've already initiated linking a couple documents that were discussed at the Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting for social studies into the social studies standards document. So the instructional guidelines that were discussed and some of the statutory requirements document, that also is linked there as well. So that was a question that had come up at the Curriculum Committee of the Board as to how that would be communicated with teachers, so that document serves as a communication vehicle to classroom teachers on expectations as it relates to that particular content area. So it's meant to be user-friendly for parents, community members, those who might be watching this this evening. Every content area is there. You click into the various links for each of the content areas, and you'll see a full-page summary for each content area for Cedarburg standards, which include the Wisconsin standards at the floor of our standards. So tonight, you are publicly acknowledging that those are our standards per statute and policy.
Any motion approved on that?
You do.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just a clarification, or maybe a question, actually. These are the same as 2022. What was approved by the board? Or what, were there any changes? I went through most of the links, but not quite all of them.
They are the same. There aren't, there weren't any dramatic changes. The Family and Consumer Science Department here at the high school has a Safe Serve standards that we're using for certification. I included that.
Okay.
Pardon me. And again, then the two social studies documents that were added.
Sure.
So that's the beauty of this. This helps us to refresh them. I did put the new date on them, the July 23rd, shows that they're current, they're not a draft, and acknowledge that those are two areas, that there were some adds.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Passed unanimously.
The next recommendation is for approval of the McGraw-Hill Impact Social Studies Resources for 5K through 5th grade social studies.
So I do not have a presentation that goes with this. That was discussed last week at the Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting, and the recommendation is here per the committee's recommendations to the district for implementing K5 Impact Social Studies with the three areas listed noted.
So what do you mean, you said there were three areas noted?
The impact...
The stipulations.
Yeah, the stipulations, the impact news, the...
Oh, there we go. Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion?
The only thing, I just want to make sure we have the instructional guides. We recognize that there are going to be instructional guides put together. This is something we talked about at the Curriculum Committee meeting. Once the, if this is approved, then we kind of flush it, or the team flushes it out a bit. And the, the other point was that we wanted to make sure that the, Alan Fitzcalm instructional guidelines, that sheet, or that, that form that we had at the, at the Curriculum Committee meeting was going to be linked for people so that the public, for transparency, and then also for teacher information, because it answered a lot of the questions that, that were, that were raised about the program. Is that...
Yeah, that's the question document, and that, that we will upload to Canvas when we upload the scope and sequence, and we'll also put it on there from the curriculum review component that we talked about.
I just want to say thank you, Alan, for working on that document. I felt like it was a reflection of all of the hard work that you and the teachers and staff and the board members on the committee put into reviewing, which was quite a lot of content. I know it took a little bit longer, maybe than initially anticipated, but I feel like we ended up in a good, in a good spot, and while there will likely be no perfect, you know, curriculum or set of textbooks, I think it's, it'll, it'll work nicely for the district, given the stipulations that we put in place. So thank you.
My pleasure. It was a, you know, I walked away from last week's Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting feeling, it was a collective effort, board members included, and your questions and inquiry, I think, just model, you know, what stakeholders in the community look to you for, to ask questions, and it pushes it then on the system to answer those questions. So I appreciated the collective thinking and work that we all put into that, so, yeah. I think we're in an exciting spot.
Yeah, thanks again to you and the team, because I think they're, the kids are getting in a really good spot, and not just the 5K5, but also the 6 to 8. I think it's going to be a good program.
I agree.
Is there a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
I just had one, sorry, one quick thing. I, I wanted to say thank you to the Curriculum Committee members for asking the questions. These were not questions that I submitted, so I benefited from sitting and seeing what those questions were and the responses of, you know, as, Alan, as you shared, kind of what, what administration has to put forth. And I was really struck by question 15 that was asked. I don't know which board member asked that question, but it, it got me thinking a lot about alignment versus agreement, and I think that this is a board where, you know, we may not always agree, but I think there's a goal of being aligned and making sure our educators have great resources for the students. So I just, I do want to take a moment to, to thank the various board members who asked each of these questions, because they, they were beneficial for me to sit and listen to and kind of see what the thought process was. And, you know, I recall a comment made about kind of pushing this back to the committee and making sure it gets to the board, the table, so that we, we have a good sense of what it is and how to vote on it, and I do feel like these extra steps were beneficial for the long run. So again, just thank you for asking those questions and for answering them, and the steps that will make this available for parents to see down the line, to see the work that was put into it. So, so that, that's it. My second still stands.
And any other discussion? I just, I just want to thank Alan and staff, because there's been a lot of work on this for a long period of time. People don't realize it doesn't just happen overnight, because it's, it's been a long process, so. I'll put the motion before you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passed unanimously.
All right. The next recommendation is for the approval of the McGraw-Hill Grade 6 World History Voices and Perspectives, and the Grade 7 and 8 U.S. History Voices and Perspective Resources to be used in Grade 6 through 8 social studies.
Same as the kindergarten through 5th grade, so there are three stipulations listed there that we would ensure occur, which is the, the number one, looking at the By the Way, which is a digital resource that has current events in it, so that would be pre-vetted before selection of those are shared. The teacher hints for social emotional learning as it relates to the content area would also be pre-vetted, and then, of course, the question and answer doc encompasses the, the definition of social studies content and some of the various other things that were asked. All of that would be included in our work at 6 to 8.
Again, that, that document will be part of it, so everyone can see that, right?
Yes.
And then, just also to be clear, when we say that the SCL Teacher Guide, I'm sorry, the SCL Teacher Hint section, Teacher Guide, they're used after they've embedded, some of the material may or may not fit, is right?
Correct.
So, you know, we just don't know yet, because we have to, your team has to work together, put together the instructional guidelines and all that.
You are correct. Yep.
One thing I would just want to note that's in the guide is that there's a section here called Scope and Sequence, and it goes through in Grade 7 and Grade 8 what era of American history is taught at those grades. And just reviewing the book, some on the Curriculum Committee noted that as it got more into the, you know, very modern era, that the bias of the book became a little bit more obvious in, in some regards, and that those chapters aren't planned on being taught, that the most modern part of American history, it goes up to civil rights in the American society, and it says content delivery stops at the civil rights movement. So I thought that was important to note for people, you know, looking at the book in the future, reviewing it.
You are correct, and so when you think of social studies content, it is a K-12 learning experience for students, so every level has their part in the teaching of U.S. history, and the middle school stop, as you said, at the civil, civil rights era, and then the high school will pick up after that.
What's nice about the program at all levels, I think, is it's really geared towards critical thinking, and that aligns, if we, if we do it, if the instructional guidelines are done properly, which I imagine they would be, that we'll be able to Cedarburg our...
Cedarburgize, yeah.
Cedarburgize, you know? The, the, the material in a way that we are, we're major, or we're satisfying our, really our objective of teaching how to think rather than what to think, where if there is some bias, that it's not going to be something that's necessarily going to be an issue. It might be a learning opportunity, if anything.
Correct. And we, we discussed at the, and for those watching at home here today, or this evening, a tool called Thinking Like a Historian, and that we would put more detail in that as it relates to Cedarburg instructional practices, and it does equip students then to really have, like, be taught an elementary, middle school, high school thinking routine when you're approaching any content. Who's the author? What's the background of the author? Understanding the content that they're reading, and things come with perspectives and to, to notate that, so that our students are equipped when they exit this, the system, that they're ready for the next level of learning, whatever that is, citizen, of course, post-secondary education, that they always have, they're equipped with that critical mindset.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passed unanimously.
Thank you. The next recommendation is for the approval of the 2014 edition of the Second Step Bullying
Prevention Unit for Grades 5K through 5. And Kara Amundson, our Director of Student Services, is here for any questions. I guess I would also like to add, in board docs this afternoon, we did add a draft version of the letter that will go out to all families, along with the scope and sequence for each of the grade levels. So the, each, this program consists of four lessons that are delivered by the school psychologists, and again, based on some of the conversation we had in the prior Curriculum Committee meetings, we did put an overview with, with the content and different things for each of those lessons. That'll be sent out at the beginning of the year, and then an email will be sent out a week prior to each lesson, just to remind parents of, of what's there. And there's, yeah.
This is, this is going to be delivered by the, the school psychs? I thought it was through the classroom.
The school psychs go into the classroom and deliver it.
Did they have time for that?
That's one of the things that they've always done.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion? Questions?
I do actually have a question. And this actually might be more towards Alan. So since we are transitioning everything over to Canvas, would it be possible to have this also listed on there as well, just for future reference? You know, a link, a link to it or whatnot, because if this is just being sent out as an email, people might miss it. Perhaps we want to look at doing this instead of sending it out as an email or a letter, making this part of registration, showing that, you know, as you've registered, like, you have to check you've seen this document, or you've seen that document, that you have seen, these are what we're covering in all the bullying lessons. Check it off. That way, we know they've seen it and haven't had an opportunity to miss a letter or an email.
I think it really is supposed to be delivered by the school psychs. Is that, is there a reason why we would need them to do it versus the classroom?
So I think the rationale behind it would be they have the, they have the background and the knowledge and the training to more effectively and efficiently deliver that level of instruction, and it's one less thing our classroom teachers have to then navigate and learn and master.
What about counselors? Do they be put?
We don't...
So this is, this is K5, and we don't have counselors at K5.
But you could have someone theoretically come in and, and do it.
Potentially. Potentially.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, because we, you and I met a while back and went through the, the list of, of activities and responsibilities that are on the, the school psychs and others, and it just, I don't know if this is the, to me, it doesn't look like the best fit as far as what, what all they're, they're doing, so.
When we went to the expense of spending more money for school psychs instead of counselors, we specifically talked about IEPs and things like that, that they could do that a school counselor couldn't do. So I guess I, I kind of share that, is we should look at, if this is proper staffing for that. And I, we've, we've done it that way since we added the new school psychs, but as we're looking at cost savings and things and that, maybe just something to explore, I think. And I don't have a problem with the program, but that's something that you guys can look into.
Yeah, for sure.
See if that's the best thing.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to see that, like, to see if we can make a change next, next year on this, because do we have to approve it every year? Is that the plan?
No, you'd only approve it once unless there's a change.
Oh, okay. So we could, we could look at a change later on if we want.
Correct.
They decided to update it beyond the 2014.
Yep.
And, 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 okay. Any other discussion?
So just, I guess, a question here. So this, as, as mom to an elementary CSD student, whose experience with this program is the psychs going into the classrooms and speaking to this, I, I've never had an issue with that. I found that to be helpful as also a parent who has a student with an IEP. So I think that if there is discussion on that, any possible changes, you know, I don't know this, I don't know the scope of what you talked about, Dave, with Kara, so I don't want, I don't want to comment on that, but from my perspective, it's been beneficial for our family, so I would want to understand more in depth why there would be a change to that and what that would potentially look like. So that, that's my, my input on it.
Of course. I think we all would want that information.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But it's something to think about, is the only reason I'm raising it.
Because it does, it kind of contradicts with why we added school psychs, so, in a way.
I can't speak to this before my time.
I've been here a long time.
But I can say school psychs are, can do everything a school counselor can do and then some. That's their training and experience and expertise, so.
So to my question, is there an option to move this to registration instead of sending it out as a letter or an email?
Not for this year. I mean, certainly something we could think about in the future. I would say that I would be careful with that, because we don't do it with any other curriculum-related item, and I realize this isn't necessarily like anything, any other curriculum-related item. I know some of the feedback we do get from registration, and Kirsten can give me a nod as people already think we have too much in there.
Yeah.
And so, again, something we can certainly look at, not for this year, because registration has always gone out, already gone out, but certainly something that we can jot down, and I'll make sure that Kirsten and I and Kara and Alan, as we talk about registration next year, talk about that.
Yeah, because it would, it would be nice to have it somewhere solidly, so that if a parent says, "Hey, wait a minute, I didn't see that," we can say, "Well, we sent out notification, and it's always here."
Yeah. Well, I think what you did say is we definitely can get that added to Canvas. I mean, that can be something that's in, in our regular resource component without a doubt. Yeah.
If it were to move to registration, I think I'd also like to see it sent at the time that it's taught, too, because just putting that back in front of parents would be helpful versus, I know I've gone through registration and very, you know, quickly...
I think that's the plan, is for classroom teachers to, to give that heads up about a week ahead of time. Hey, just a reminder, we're going to be covering this, so that they are getting that refresh.
I do have a question, too. When you talk about the school psychs coming in to do that, are classroom teachers in there as well?
Yes.
I guess I'm just wondering why, like, I can see a value having both, but if we're also looking at time constraints for the, for the, for the psychologist, isn't it really the teachers implementing this when the school psych walks out the door?
I think one of the advan, sorry to jump in, I think one of the advantages of having a consistent voice all the way through is not only does it reinforce that to the student, but it also helps the teacher, you know, and, and a teacher knows that what I'm hearing, what I'm sharing with the students, once the school psych leaves, as I go on, I know that my teacher next door is doing the same thing. And so, not that our teachers can't deliver the same message, but again, when you have one person delivering the same message, it does provide a consistency that is guaranteed.
Well, and if I'm not mistaken, as well, the school psychologists were a large part of choosing the program itself, so they would technically be the most content experts with the highest amount of training to deliver this. So I would argue that you would want the most experienced in the district, since they're already employed by the district, to, to be there and then have the teachers in the classroom essentially as reinforcement and backup.
I think one of the benefits of seeing how in-depth this is, is that it's already pretty redundant, like, I think a teacher could go in there and deliver it the same way as the next teacher, I think.
Teachers meet and discuss, so they plan, so I really think they could. I just, we, we paid a lot more money to go to school psychs from counselors for specific
It's just, we, we paid a lot more money to go to school psychs from counselors for specific reasons the board approved it for. And this wasn't one of them, when we discussed it, so that's just, that's, that's why I question. Any other discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Cara, for providing these scope and sequence documents. I think that they do an excellent job of notifying parents about the details of each lesson in a way that the out-of-the-box templated parent letters from Second Step did not. Each lesson has a video, and in this document, each one is, it details out, you know, what scenario is presented in that video. And I think it will let parents know what's coming, what's coming up, and also be a better tool for providing that discussion back at home. So thank you for adding that, and I think it's a great benefit to go along with this. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing any other discussion? I'll put the motion to approve before you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? One opposed? Any abstentions? Passes? Almost, yeah. Five of them. I don't know how many bodies we have here.
All right. Finally, for this evening, we are recommending for approval a tuition-based peer option as part of the CSD Early Childhood 3K Program. I don't care if you want to give any overview, because it's been a couple weeks.
Yeah, sure. So we talked about the service delivery model and our obligation as an LEA to provide a continuum of services for all students who have disabilities, and that doesn't exclude our three-year-olds, that includes them. And we have a responsibility to not unilaterally place them within a 4K classroom, which generally speaking was the strongest practice that I have observed this past year. So we came together as a team, and we talked about, you know, how can we do this differently? And out of that came, hey, we used to have a peer partner program, so could we do something like that? So having our three-year-olds with disabilities part of a program that has children who are three without disabilities is the best of both worlds. Both groups of students benefit from that and learn leadership and compassion and friendship, and just builds a good foundation moving forward for our, for our kids, so.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Connie.
I was going to, I was going to motion, so.
Oh, I just had a, should I ask my question after the motion?
Either.
No, yeah. I'll ask it now. Thank you. Would you describe this program more as an early childhood special education program or more of a preschool?
Early childhood special education program.
I would, I would just ask that when it's marketed, or the website, or the brochure, that that term is used and not preschool, because I wouldn't want people in the community to misunderstand that, oh, Cedarburg School District now has a preschool program, come sign up for a preschool program, when it's really kind of a more narrow, a narrow scope. And I think one of the brochure, not that it was published or anything, had preschool mentioned, and it's not really a preschool.
Sure.
So, and I just have one question. I brought it up at the last meeting. So just to confirm, you would be purchasing kind of like a basic kind of curriculum, or like instructional guide for the couple of staff members who would be running this, but that would not go through the curriculum committee? Is that the case?
Correct. It's based on student IEP needs and what they're needing to learn. So it's a very vast resource that they can pull from what they need to address IEPs. And then our students without disabilities get, we call it incidental benefit. They get the benefit of having that direct instruction right along with our students who have disabilities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm excited to see this. Our family benefited from when there was the peer model, peer program back at Thorson, when James was three. So my one question would be for the numbers, was it six, was it kept at 16?
16 per session.
Per session, okay.
Yeah, 16 peer students.
And is this something where, you know, in the past, there was basically, I don't want to use the word audition, because that's not accurate, but, you know, there were members of the community that were brought in to basically see what their dispositions, personalities, strengths, and how that would fit with students that are, you know, are, are three-year-olds that are in that sped category, or going to be. Is that still the plan, or how, what's the, what's the process for getting to those numbers?
Sure, that is not the plan. It is to have a kind of first come, first served. When the spots are filled, they're filled, and then we'll create a waiting list.
Okay.
And then parents, I'll ask to, to have them fill out some information for us, you know, what is your child's disposition? And are they toilet trained? You know, do they have behavior concerns? Those sorts of things, so we kind of, no one can prepare.
Yeah, okay.
But no, that would not be a practice I would institute.
Although we also did discuss sharing it with our, with our staff first, and then going from there. So if we had staff members that wanted to take advantage of it, they certainly could.
And would it be possible, to Elizabeth's point, to go back and look at what the brochure looked like from 2000s? What would it be, '17 or so?
Sure, I can try and find it.
Yeah, I feel like I might have a screenshot from ages ago somewhere, because I think that's a fair point as well. So my, my motion still stands. I'm really excited and thankful that you guys worked on this so much.
So are you making a motion to approve?
Yes, thank you, yep.
I'll second that. Discussion further? One thing we talked about in the committee, I think, was, or I heard talked about in the committee, was that we probably don't need to advertise this, because it's going to be pretty popular, so I wouldn't think you need to spend any time or money doing that.
Yeah.
Just move ahead with getting it going.
Sounds good.
Other questions or discussion? If, I'll put the motion before you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to committee reports. Curriculum, Dave, I was on the state.
Yeah, so the, well, for the June, the July 12th one you raised.
July 12th.
And we covered all that. That was the, the two social studies programs. So we've covered all that, and then I think there was a June 28 homework that you were trying to.
And we covered all of that, because it was just forwarded, huh?
Yep. So that's all it got.
WASB delegate report?
Yes, thank you for adding this to the agenda. I appreciate it. So I am used to trying to get thoughts down to three minutes, so I'll do my best here. But the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Summer Leadership Institute was held in Green Bay this past Friday, July 14th, and Saturday, July 15th. As our CSD delegate, I attended this event. On day one, I had the opportunity to speak with the keynote speaker, Dr. Depeche Nafzaria, who's the Associate Professor, Division of General Pediatrics and Adolescent Medicine at UW Madison School of Medicine and Public Health over breakfast, and I attended seven sessions. The topics included that I attended were a portion of youth mental health post-pandemic, a focus on anxiety and depression, as well as a portion of designing safe and welcoming schools, a panel discussion, best practices in communicating in times of crisis, preventing student injury, what board members should know about liability, the power of proactive and preventative emotional well-being skill development, cybersecurity and citizenship, keeping kids safe and districts secure in an online era, and then the WASB essential elements of government, or, excuse me, of governance. On day two, I attended four sessions. Those topics included onboarding, onboarding new school board members, fundamentals of school finance, public record laws, and public comment periods, and W, and the WASB legislative update. There were a total of 16 sessions, 14 of which occurred simultaneously, which necessitated choosing some topics over others. And then, on my part, I attended half of some, half of others, to be able to kind of make the most of that time. Attendees were given those programs and print-offs of the day's PowerPoint presentations to be able to review before, during, and after those sessions. Excuse me. My goals in attending the Summer Leadership Institute included learning more about WASB, meeting and speaking with board members from throughout the state, participating in sessions to the highest extent possible, and having an enjoyable time with individuals that I may not have met, were it not for us all having the opportunity to serve our respective communities on school boards. There were also superintendents present, so I got to meet a few superintendents as well. I have accepted a two-year term on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Policy and Resolutions Committee, representing Region 15. Region 15 is over 25 school districts, and I did, I was very intentional in trying to see who was there from our region to say hello, and that was great. The conference was informative and educational. I greatly appreciated having the opportunity to attend and to share really a top view this evening with board members. I do have those print-offs. If fellow board members would like copies to kind of see what was covered, I'm certainly available to answer any questions from board members or the community. And I'm, you know, still processing. It was a ton of information, and it was, in my view, very informative, educational, and helpful. But I fully recognize that we, as a district, have kind of ebbed and flowed in our participation with WASB. And I, I do want to make sure that as anyone who represents a large number of people, that we're kind of actively working together to find those areas, again, of alignment. We may not always agree on every single thing, but I think there's a real healthy opportunity here to find those areas of alignment and see where our district can benefit. The more time you put into something, in my view, the more you get out of it.